Okay, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Seven oh five PM. Cecil Township Planning Commission. First item on the agenda, approval of minutes from the January nineteenth meeting.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Troy, are you abstaining? You weren't here. Less more. Perfect. Okay, motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is old business, application two zero two two dash zero zero three three, Silver Creek Phase One Subdivision, applicant Miranda Holmes LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make sure that everybody received the letter I emailed to you yesterday, I believe.
Okay.
As I stated at last month's meeting, we are applying for preliminary approval of phase one and two. I know we discussed having a meeting with Gateway to address the large number of comments that we did have. We did have that meeting and went through the comment letter with them in a recent sense. And I know today we received another comment letter, which was a lot less serious. We have reviewed that and we don't see that there's anything there that can't be addressed. So I don't have a whole lot to present to you tonight, but I am here to answer any questions.
You said preliminary approval for phase ones and two?
Correct.
I'm sorry?
I thought it was only phase one.
That's what I thought as well, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, I know that the recording plans that were submitted were only phase one. But I do believe the... And this is the she letter for today. Final approval of phase one and two.
The letter we have that was issued states that the request is for final approval of phases one and two of the land development and preliminary approval for phases one through six of the subdivision and land development. Phase one consists of forty-six single-family lots and phase two consists of twenty-eight single-family lots. For the benefit of the board, just to let you know, this development had a revised PRD, which changed the number of phases from three phases to six phases. There's been no increase or change in the number of lots. The lots have stayed the same. So those are probably the big things here on the plan relative to the February sixth submission. The item... I don't hear your name.
I'm Dylan Arbeck.
Okay, Dylan. As Dylan said, I mean, these items don't seem to be too out of line, that can't be addressed. And some of these comments will remain in effect until they are addressed relative to this. I think, Dylan, is it possible for you to have all of these comments addressed before the Board of Supervisors' March meeting?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. I think the one thing that we are very... The most... One of the things that we're concerned about with the storm sewers is getting those storm sewers that are within the public right-of-way, one percent or greater.
Right, yeah, and I looked at that with the designer today and we have a game plan to...
I think the other comment is under three for land development. The sediment trap number five behind lot six eleven is on the adjoining property. That's the only other mild concern I had.
Yeah, and then last...
Yeah, go ahead.
And then last month, we talked about the number of off-street parking.
Right.
So I wasn't sure if that was looked at further.
We reached out to USPS about the requirements. They did respond to us. They said they don't have any requirements.
Okay.
But we did look to the ordinance for any guidance and we did find a requirement for parking. I think the requirement for the number of lots we have is ten in between the two areas with the mailbox clusters.
Okay.
We have sixteen. So we do need the ordinance on that.
And we had our traffic engineer look into that. There is nothing in the ITC standards that requires the number of parking spaces for a cluster mailbox location. I think the only recommendation would be that maybe two of those parking spaces be signed as reserved for, you know, post office mailbox access. So that if someone is having an activity or a family event and using those accessory spaces, at least two spaces are available for someone to pull in and get their mail and not be inconvenienced.
We can definitely specify that on the plan.
Do you have anything else?
No, I'm fine.
David, do you have any?
No.
Troy, any thoughts or comments? Yeah, I was gonna ask if anybody would like to make a motion.
I will make a motion to approve... Oh, sorry. Application two zero two two dash zero zero three three, Silver Creek Phase One Subdivision. Contingent on all items from the February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three letter from Gateway Engineers being addressed.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda for this evening is application two zero two two dash zero zero three six, rank plan of lots number two.
I'm not sure anybody's here for rank.
We have a letter here from Gateway. Joe, do you have any comments?
We had prepared a comment letter and none of the comments... There was never any response given to the comments. Might be... Maybe you want to table it.
It's unfortunate.
Yep.
Jack, if we... Do we have the ability to table again on this one or...
Yeah, I believe it's till March.
So we're good?
We're okay with this.
You good?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. We table application twenty twenty-two dash zero zero three six, the rank plan of lots number two.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion to second... Or motion to table on a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is tabled. Okay, we're gonna be moving on to new business now. We have application two zero two three dash zero 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 two, Crown Castle, conditional use.
Good evening. Robert Ratcher on behalf of Crown Castle. This is a site at Lewicki Road. It's a communications facility that's already in existence. I'll give you a little bit of history as to how that happened. We were here in twenty eighteen and I believe I see a couple of familiar faces from back in twenty eighteen. For the benefit of everybody, the site was approved as a conditional use in twenty eighteen. There was an appeal by a neighboring landowner, Mr. Sluchak. Both of the courts that heard it on appeal said that the township properly granted the conditional use. Permits were issued, construction was started. Then Mr. Sluchak brought up the fact that he thought that the way that the township was interpreting the ordinance... There's an expiration on conditional uses, as you probably know, if you don't get started or pull a permit by a certain time. So he took that to common pleas court and the court agreed with his interpretation. So that's on appeal to the appellate court, but in the meantime, Crown Castle has a need to get on with this project. So we're bringing back the same project over again. There's nothing different in this project from the one that was approved five years ago. So basically, we're just seeking a renewal really of the original conditional use, but obviously, we have to go through the process again. We'll put up the site plan. We'll bring our engineer up and let him give you a little walk around, give you a refresher on what it looks like, or if you're only seeing it for the first time, and then we can talk some more about this. So Eli, if you want to come up? While they're getting that ready, I might add to the fact, as you may recall, this is moving an existing tower site about twenty-two hundred feet to facilitate some other development on that property. As soon as this one is commissioned and turned on, we have an obligation to tear down the other one. So the net effect is that no more towers, just one tower in a different place.
The proposed site is a hundred ninety-five-foot self-support tower with a four-foot lightning rod, approximately a fifteen-hundred-foot access road. Utility use meant to the lease area as well. There's cross culverts and infiltration burns on the other side of the cross culverts along the access road to handle all stormwater. We have a rain garden up near the site as well to handle stormwater.
The driveway, there's some requirements that the township has relative to industrial surface. And I do know that we comply with that regulation. So really, any other questions that the board may have about it, we're willing to answer. Obviously, there's a review letter from the engineers.
I remember you coming here and us going through this previously, so appreciate the...
I was much younger then.
We all were.
We all were.
You know, and I understand... And I appreciate that the application is the same, that the information is the same, right? But of course, not everything stays the same. So Joe, just want to verify that nothing relevant to this application has changed as far as ordinance or...
Sure.
Legal interpretations that...
This is a conditional use application and the applicant has made a due application, addressed, provided responses to all the conditions relative to what has been considered. Been considered for it. And there's recommended conditions, no different than what was recommended back when the previous conditional use was processed and meets the setback requirements, meets the height requirements, meets the fence and landscaping requirements. And they've agreed to provide the necessary inspections on an annual basis and provide ASML plans. So I mean, it's pretty much the same. All that you're doing is going to make a recommendation so that it can go back to the Board of Supervisors for the appropriate conditional use here.
Thank you. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 two, the Crown Castle Conditional Use Application. Contingent upon addressing the items in Gateway Engineer's letter dated February tenth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Motion on the...
I'll second.
Second, okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll never come back again.
Actually, I had a question.
Construction started up there, because I can see it from my eye.
Yeah.
And the tower started getting built. Yeah, I get that, but how construction started and like one section went up based on this? It seemed from where I was at that it started in a really wide base. And then that came down and then something smaller. Did I miss something or...
I think visually, it just looked wide because the higher steel that... Of course, you know, and it's three legs, so it all tapers in. And I think visually, it must have just looked that way. I actually did see that. I was on the way to Washington County Courthouse and I would look up on the hill to see how the progress was going. And I saw that same thing at one point, that it seemed like it was very wide. And then when I saw it with the steel up, it didn't look that way to me anyway. It didn't look that way anymore, so... Really?
I think they have the additional...
Oh, that makes sense, yeah.
The additional section they go on top of the first one was sitting next to it, too, so that's probably...
That makes a lot of sense.
Because I did remember seeing it. That's probably what it was.
Thank you. That's been gnawing at me for...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice.
Item adjourned, application number two zero two two dash zero three three.
Mike Graziani representing Graziani Homes. It's a standard subdivision that was the same as the previously approved plan.
Make a motion to approve application twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 three, Alto Piano Phase Nine, Revised Lot nine eighteen.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. Each of you has in front of you the two thousand twenty-two annual report. I know that the electronic copy was sent to you. I do want to call your attention to a couple items. If you flip over, Liz did a fantastic job, as always, in accumulating everything that's transpired in twenty twenty-two. I do want to show you on the Excel spreadsheet, several pages in, the pages aren't numbered. So what you'll see is construction type, number of permits, estimated construction cost. We have four decent data points there, all increasing. Notice that residential deck, fence, roof, that seemed to... That was one of the bigger ones. Dropped a little bit, but overall, we increased significantly, say, construction costs on single-family. Detached went from twenty-nine oh eighty-two to thirty-five oh nine. Township is growing and I think that's in large part because of your efforts. So thank you for that. You can note that total construction cost up about a million over twenty twenty-one. Not as high as twenty twenty, even with the pandemic. I know we were busy that year, so... You can see the pie chart on the next page, permits by type. You can see residential, miscellaneous, deck, fence, roof, that type of thing. So we've got a lot of improvements going on in existing homes. Next biggest piece of the pie is single-family detached. So a lot of activity. You can see the construction costs, single-family detached construction costs on... Their estimated cost on the next page. So Cecil Township is growing and that's a good thing. Yeah. Yeah, it seemed a little spike during the pandemic, so rightfully so. Everybody just kind of wanted to stay at home and that's a good thing, so...
Thank you. Do we need... We have to make a motion to approve the report, correct?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions on the report yet? Looks great.
She did a great job. She did a great job. I'll let her know.
Would anybody like to make that motion?
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two annual report for the Cecil Township Planning Commission.
I'll second that report... That motion. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Your report is approved, sir.
Thank you.
And I'm done making notes because I don't have my pen.
You have a pen?
It just flew apart. I was about to. Do you have anything else for us? Ordinance amendments, anything of that nature? All right, motion to adjourn?
I second.
Welcome, Troy, too. Thanks for being here.
Yes, thank you.
Same time, same station, four weeks from now.
I will not be here. Next month, I'll be in Phoenix. I know that already.
So Christie, Christie Buehler presiding?
I won't have to.
We're gonna have the gavel back next month, though.
It's not up there?
I don't need it.
Oh, wait, it is. It was over there. I kept looking. I had my blinders on.
It floats.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. Meeting adjourned, seven thirty. Thank you.
Not my friend is as good as it gets. See you later. Take care. Good night.
Gotcha. My apologies. All well and good. I mean, if you have any questions, call us. I can answer them.
Lucille. Manola, La Manola? Yeah. Nick. Nick, yeah. He used to live next to my parent. He used to live next to us in Baldwin Township. Tell him I said hi.
Right. I saw him. Well, not he, but he has.
All right.
So Jack, I don't know if you knew. So that's where things got a little... Somebody called me.
I worked with her a lot.
No, she was getting around. I was like, were you sure somebody on the planning commission? She said yes. Okay, that's fair. I didn't want you to say... So no, I'm familiar with, you know, words. Okay, that's what I do. I digest the words. Survey. I read words. I wait. I've been... I have been on surveys, however, Dennis Smith and I spoke to him in December. I'm not doing, but we were just... Sure. Yeah. I just... I think we were trying to come up with... Just let you... Yeah, we're out there and if somebody could help me digest.
How would you do?
Well, sure, I know we passed this office and I was already discussing it. For a human.
That's what I remember. You came up to our house.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, and it was like, yeah, but not. I mean, I'm not gonna make you try to up that goal for those who...
Okay. Because I mean, that's all brought us back to us. Sure. Because you came up, parked right there. Big stone house with slate roof, so. Okay, no. Yeah. When was that? How long? Yeah, because I, when I was So it wouldn't have been me, for sure. But that's when the survey took place. That's who did. KLA should serve. Okay, yeah, so. Marjorie, I work for AJ, so.